Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the September 12th first budget hearing. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And ask that you take a moment of silence. Commissioner Loeb.
If you'll all join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of America. One nation, one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we're going to move into public hearings. And move to item D1.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, item D1 allows for the reading of the tentative aggregate operating millage rate to fund the portion of the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget that is supported by property taxes. At this time, I would ask the Budget Office read into the record the tentative aggregate millage rate for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, the aggregate tentative millage rate for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget is 5.8447. The tentative aggregate millage rate is 7.62 percent less than the aggregate current fiscal year 2018-2019 millage rate of 6.3268. The aggregate rollback rate for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget is 5.8447. The aggregate tentative millage rate for the fiscal year 2019-20 budget is 5.8447. The tentative aggregate millage rate represents a 0.00 percent change when compared to the aggregate rollback rate.
Madam Chair, Agenda Item D2. D2 allows for the public comment on the revised tentative county budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. Before we begin public comment, I would ask the Budget Office read into the record the revised tentative budget information.
The fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative budget is $1,334,915,547. The budget represents an increase of $567,576 or 0.04 percent more than the fiscal year 2018-2019 current budget of $1,334,347,971.
Madam Chair, we are now ready to accept public comments on the revised tentative budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Okay, I'll call your name out, and you have three minutes. If you could just state your name and address, or name and city, that would be great. Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Give us your name.
It's Maria Esther Regliosi.
Wow, he didn't write all that here. That's okay, it's a lot to write.
Yes, it is, it's a lot to say.
Okay, and you're from Melbourne?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
My concern is transportation. I am a frequent rider, as opposed to flyer. I ride my buses every day, sometimes six days a week. I would ride at seven if they were available, but they're not. Of course, there is a curfew for the buses, which makes it a little difficult. You have to plan your trip really carefully, make sure you're at your bus stop on time, whether you're going or coming. I know that through news media, that Melbourne or Brevard has enticed companies to come and open up here in Brevard County. That's wonderful. But if abatements are given for taxes, where is the money supposed to come from to fund transportation? It sorely needs an increase in funding. There's plenty of people who would ride it, but they are not willing to wait an hour for a bus, especially being baked alive in the sun. It's unconscionable. None of you would do it. I don't know if any of you ride the buses. I'm sure you all ride your cars, which is nice. For us disabled individuals, we don't have that option. We have to stand and wait, and we do it patiently. Again, I commend the bus company, they're courteous, they're respectful, they, if they see I need help getting on a bus, they help me, they'll help me get off. You don't get that in a lot of places. So, yeah, they do have the personal touch. Again, I commend them for all they do with as little as they have. But if we're trying to entice people to move here, and we don't have a competitive travel system, what's the point? You're increasing traffic on the roads, which we know, the roads are in terrible shape. People who have disabilities, they fall through the cracks because they don't know how to get around. The transportation system needs a severe shot in the arm, a real boost. And I know with the charter cap, you can't raise taxes, so you sort of are operating with your hands tied behind your back. Frankly, I thought it was an ill-advised thing, but it is what it is. It needs a severe infusion of money. It needs to be improved so that the ridership, A, can improve, and people will be willing to use it without saying, "I'm not waiting an hour for a bus. It takes me two and a half hours to get to work." So that means you have to leave your house three hours before you're supposed to be there. That's not easy. Again, standing outside, waiting for a bus, in all types of weather. Yeah, people do it in other places, but it's more conducive. They have shelters at every bus stop, not so here. You have buses that come every 15 to 20 minutes, not so here. The most you have, every half hour, and that's only on the weekdays on certain routes. Every other route is one bus an hour. That's my time.
Thank you.
It's been nice speaking with you.
Thank you.
Camilla Tate?
Sound the podium.
Hi, Camilla.
Hi. Okay, so it's Camille Tate, I live in Melbourne, Florida. I am representing the Melbourne Space Coast Chapter, National Federation of the Blind of Florida. I'm here to speak on behalf of transportation as well, and I'm going to speak a little bit differently than Maria. What I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for recognizing the need in our transit system for more paratransit. I believe there are two paratransit routes to be added within the budget. It is sorely needed, especially in areas such as Titusville, where, you know, we have people who can use the system to go to work, to go to school, to live their everyday lives, go to the doctor, the grocery stores. And I'm very, very thankful that this need has been recognized by our county Commissioners. Of course, as Maria says, there's still more work we would like to have done, but it all takes time. And I just wanted to give my support to SCAD as well, for the exemplary job they've done within the means that they have, they provide good service. And we hope to see an expansion of that service in the future. And we will be coming before you again, as always, to start talking about transportation again. But thank you for putting those two transit routes into the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chet Ellsworth, 989 North Highway, A1A, Indy Atlantic. I just have a couple procedural questions on this budget. And I've called a couple of you about it. When the $1.3 billion is approved, is that the last you see of it, or does the Board approve the payments individually? And the other question was concerning the different committees that are reviewing the budget. And I tried to get ahold of your office today, and Ms. Roth sent me the minutes of the meetings, and I was wondering why they're not published, whether, so that you could go to the meetings of these committees. And whether that's something that is flying underneath the sunshine laws. Anyway, I'd like to know, most of the counties that I have had dealings with, most public entities always have the Board approve payments on a monthly basement, basis of all their vendors. And that can easily hold auditability and credibility in check. And I'm inquiring how that is done in this state, who does it? And if it's not you, whether there's some selfie auditing going on, which I have seen in some of the other meetings that I've attended. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
Just real briefly, I'll take a stab at the first part of it. If anyone wants to grab any other portion, that's up to them. But we do have both internal and external auditors. Our checks, at least for payroll and things of that nature, cut through the Comptroller's Office. So there is oversight with respect to that. As far as the commission itself overseeing each and every check that's written, realistically, it's something that would be a logistic impossibility. I can tell you that depending on the amount of the check and what it's for, various staff members have authority up to preset amounts, and anything over those amounts generally will be bounced up either to a director, or to the Assistant County Manager, or depending, again, on the amount, up to the County Manager. And even beyond that, to the commission, depending on the use, the authorization and the amount. So that's sort of the Cliff Notes version of an answer to your first question.
And I'll just reemphasize, you know, mostly what you said is, you'd be surprised what the external auditors find. I mean, they're really good at finding where we could be doing better as far as, not just reporting, but process. And that's usually, sometimes, how things get lost, or, not mishandled purposely, but just where things are more difficult to find or less transparent, so. And we have a receptive management team that makes sure that we're doing everything on the up and up. I'm not sure exactly what committees you were referring to as far as oversight. If you're talking about the Budget Review Committee, those board members and stuff, all of that is public. Now, as far as getting those meetings published online, that's something we can look into. It's probably just a matter of getting that uploaded to our website, you know, to make sure that the public has access. That wouldn't be a difficult process at all if it's videotaped. I'm not sure that it's videotaped, or if it's audio. There's minutes from the meeting, I know that. Yeah. Do we publish those minutes? Probably don't, right?
We have access to them. I don't know if they are currently published.
We could request that.
Yeah, but they're always available. I mean, if, we were just asked today, they were provided all the minutes that were available for the last few minutes, the last couple that were there. You know, with the hurricane and other things that have happened, I don't believe the last one or two meetings, they're still trying to catch up. So, you know, it does take time to do the minutes for the various committees that we provide staff for, so. But they are available, and we do make them available. And I think we did it actually the same day today.
And maybe as a process, or as something we could possibly look into getting, at least for some of the committees that oversee the budget, maybe getting their minutes published if it's not too cumbersome a task.
Yeah, we can.
Since we're doing the minutes anyway.
Whether or not they can be put online, we can definitely look into that.
And I can tell you, I have an individual that, you know, I don't remember if he's my appointment or one of your guys' but he's like a hawk. And so, he's really an asset to the Board.
I think I hear you're talking about.
Yes. So, I mean, there's definite oversight, and there's criticism, and there's ideas, and some good and some not so good, because some of those ideas involve trying to increase, come up with ways to increase taxes, but other ideas on where we can cut. So, as good information comes out of that Board, is why I suggested, at least looking at the possibility of having us go ahead and get those published, for interested public.
Just, I'm thinking, I see Lois over there, I'm sorry to kind of call her out. Do you think that's a pretty easy thing to do, to get those minutes? Okay, thumbs up, perfect. Thanks.
All right, Dom Scafeta?
Good afternoon, thank you for hearing me. I was under the impression.
Can you just say?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dom Scafeta, 18 West Point Drive, Cocoa Beach, Florida.
Thank you.
I was under the impression that this meeting was about the fire districts, and the funding for the fire districts, according to the tax thing that I got in the mail. But anyway, my concern is that, where we are in Cocoa Beach, it's an unincorporated area, and our house is like two miles, I talked to the deputy chief at Cocoa Beach, our house is two miles from the Cocoa Beach Fire Department, yet we're lumped in with South Patrick, or the Fire Department in Satellite Beach on South Patrick. And my insurance got dropped this year because they said that my fire district is too far away. And I talked to them in Cocoa Beach, and they said, "Well, we would respond to any fires in South Snug Harbor." So, when I was talking to the deputy, he said, "Well, you know, what we need to do is, we need to move this from a mutual aid to auto aid." I don't understand all the ins and outs of it, but I wanted to, you know, see what could be done to help us, because, you know, I need insurance on my house.
And I'm sure we'll do anything we can to help. Oh, here comes, here comes our chief.
Oh, good.
It's convenient when your chief is in the house.
That's worked out good.
So, you live in the area of South Cocoa Beach?
Yeah, Snug Harbor, yeah, it's unincorporated.
So, for many years, at least for the past five years I've been fire chief, that has been a point of contention with the homeowners down there, is insurance premiums rising or people getting dropped. We've had many talks with the city of Cocoa Beach, they've undergone some leadership changes, fire chief changes. Those talks have gotten dropped off. We did have some talks about a year and a half ago, and what the city wanted to cover that area was something we had to discuss with our senior leadership as well. So, we are in constant talks with them, but we hear you, we get those complaints and concerns quite often, and we're working on it.
Is there any kind of a timeframe, and when, you know, something might be worked out?
It's all dependent on when they want to meet with us, and when they want to sit down with our senior leadership and discuss it as well.
We'll be happy to follow up with the city and see where they are on that.
Okay, is there someone I could follow up with to, you know, just kind of keep tabs on what's going on?
Jim McKnight?
Yes, Jim McKnight.
Yeah, Jim McKnight from the city manager.
Jim McKnight?
He would be the city manager, so he would be over the fire chief there, as we look to see. We are, we do have a mutual aid agreement with them, which we respond to, to one another when needed. An auto aid agreement is different in that they would automatically respond, no matter the situation.
Right, right, and that's the way they described it to me, and, you know, and that's what the insurance company, I guess, all the insurance companies are looking for.
And you are correct in the fact that the city of Cocoa Beach is about 1.8 miles away. Our ambulance is also 1.8 miles away. The fire agent from the county services, your particular area, comes from South Patrick Shores, which is about eight or nine minutes away.
Yeah, yeah, it's all consistent with what they told me. All right, well, thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just real briefly, Mr. Batte, if you don't think it's inappropriate, I'd like to set up an appointment either with Mr. McKnight or Mayor Malik out there, with you and I as well, and if the chief wants to come along, or Mr. Wallace, that's certainly acceptable by me. But my office can set that up, if that's okay with you.
We'll be happy to participate.
Perfect. Yeah, just kind of as a heads up, I don't know if the same situation applies to both Snug Harbor and Avon by the Sea, but if it does, it may be something we can look at to try to kill two birds with one stone, depending on how we go about it.
Yeah, Avon's actually up towards.
Right, closer to Cape Canaveral, but if it's something that applies to both, we can perhaps tag team and set something up in the morning with one, and then a couple hours later at the other.
And please keep us informed.
Sure, absolutely.
Of what's happening, because that's shameful, if you can't even get insurance on your house, and I feel bad for you.
Sure, and on the county side, since you've gotten the info on Cocoa Beach's side, feel free to reach out to my office, too, and I don't mind keeping up to date as far as what I know. You know, whatever I know, I'm happy to pass along.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have. Item D3.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, for item D3, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners discuss and tentatively adopt the FY 2019-2020 millage rates. Any changes to the millage rates under this item will be recomputed by the Budget Office and announced under item D4.
Commission, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll go ahead and second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 3-0.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, based on the approved vote that you just took on the millage rates that were approved under item D3, I will now ask the Budget Office to read into the record the revised aggregate millage rates.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, the aggregate rollback rate for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget is 5.8447. The aggregate tentative millage rate for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget is 5.8447. The tentative aggregate millage rate is equal to the aggregate rollback rate.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, we are now ready for the rate approval and adoption of specific program budgets. These actions are necessary in order to certify non-advalorem assessment to the tax collector in accordance with the uniform method of collection under Florida statute. That's Section 917.3632. I'll turn it over to Joe for that.
Item D5 requests the adoption of the Stormwater Utility Resolution, ratifying, confirming, and certifying the annual stormwater utility assessment rolls.
Commission, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 3-0. Item D6?
Item D6 requests the ratification, confirmation, and certification of the annual fire services non-advalorem special assessment tax rolls.
Commission?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 3-0. Item D7?
Item D7 requests the adoption of the schedule of rates and charges for hazardous materials, special operations teams, standby response, fire prevention, and inspection rates.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Item D8?
Item D8 requests adoption of a resolution certifying the municipal services benefit unit assessment rolls to the tax collector.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
For Agenda Item D9, Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, in accordance with the Brevard County Code of Ordinances, I request adoption of the fiscal year 2019-2020 budgets for the following agencies: Solid Waste Management, Stormwater Utility Department, Fire Services Non-Advalorem Assessment, and the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, it is requested for item, Agenda Item D10, that the governing body of the Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer District approve a resolution adopting a budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
For Agenda Item D11, Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, based on the action taken under Agenda Item D3, I now ask that the Budget Office read into the record the revised tentative budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, the revised tentative budget for fiscal year The budget represents an increase of $567,576 or 0.04 percent more than the current budget
Madam Chair and Board of County Commissioners, I request tentative approval of a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 Brevard County budget.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. All right, with that, we're going to move on to board reports. Mr. Batte?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just briefly, I'm not going to go on and on, it's spoilt our good run so far. But I hope to see that the next time we're coming around for negotiations with the fire union, that we really do what we can to address the pay issues that they have, especially for retentions within the first five years. Just as we've looked at public safety from the law enforcement side this year, in particular with the Sheriff's Bucket, MSTU, I really would like to see what we can do to help out the folks on the other side of the public safety aisle, to get them where they need to be, or at least as close to that as we can manage without hurting the county. And that's all I've got.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to piggyback on my request for that. County Manager, would it be possible that we could get the firefighters and their pay so we can take a look at it, and maybe get some ideas of where their pay should be at this time?
Yes, and there's negotiations ongoing now, and we'll be coming back to the Board in executive session, and we'll provide all that information to you.
Okay, I think that would be a good tool for us to have, so we can look at it and kind of see what we are paying our firefighters, so, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, briefly, I have, a problem has come to my attention, and I need my fellow Commissioners to help me. There was, on Wickham Road, there's a wall that is in front of Suntree, and you may have noticed that if you've driven there in the last couple of months, that there's a hole in the wall from a car that hit it. Well, the reason, the insurance company for the car that hit it is willing to pay for it, but they don't know who to write the check to, because nobody claims the wall. Suntree says it's not their wall. We think it's our wall, but we don't have any documentation. We've looked and looked, we can't find any documentation. The closest that I can come is Sue Schmidt, who was the D4 Commissioner at the time. She remembers the negotiations, and when they were, when we were going to widen Wickham Road, they agreed to let us use or have that property, and in return, we built them a wall. She's willing to sign an affidavit to that effect, which I think would indicate that we are the owners of the wall. Then we could get the money from the insurance company, and we can get the wall fixed. So, Eden, how would you propose that we move forward?
I think we need to look at the chain of events, the history of the title, and see, I know you guys have looked, but I'd like to work with land acquisition, perhaps, and see if we can't find a little more information in possibly road and bridge, because they would have the records, and we need to look at it, figure it out from there.
Mr. Denihoff is, he's been very involved in this. Do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, we have checked the records pretty, very thoroughly, and we've checked with a number of staff who are still here from the time contemporaneous to the transactions that resulted in the construction of the wall. The best that I can tell you is that there is the prevailing impression that we did have, that we did accept responsibility to maintain the wall as to structure, not necessarily as to aesthetics. In other words, we weren't going to have to paint, we weren't going to have to pressure wash, but to maintain the structural wall, condition of the wall, did seem to be the prevailing thought, though there was no documentation that we could find to this effect at all, including in the land acquisition files. While very disappointed about not being able to find that, the, we did ask the Suntree homeowners representatives if they could find any documentation about it, one way or the other, and we're. the other, and we're coming up with a lot of lack of record, you know, no information on it. So, the, I have actually spoken directly to two of the land acquisition agents that were working for the county at the time. Both of them do not recall and were not involved with that particular part of the Wickham Road widening project, so they didn't have any firsthand knowledge. So, that's, leaves me kind of high and dry with respect to documentation.
We might need to create some documents. I need to look at the title and see if the wall is on individually held lots, or if it's in a homeowner's common area. That kind of issue, we'll need to look at. I think Mr. Denninghoff may already know the answers to those questions.
So, do we need, do we need a motion on my part for you to do that, or can you just go ahead and?
I think we can just proceed and look at it. And, well, we may have to bring documents back to the board, but we can investigate it and see what we need to do.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
Yeah, I don't mind the county helping out if it's simply us serving as a pass-through, or us turning around and spending the funds that we get in equal part to fix it, but my only concern, which Mr. Denninghoff touched on a little bit, a little bit ago here, is I don't want to assume an ongoing obligation to maintain a structure that we may not have an obligation to maintain. I can tell you that I wouldn't mind with one particular development, but I just wouldn't want to create a precedent where other folks in similar situations, there may be many, there may be none, come to us with a handout saying, "Please maintain our wall." So, you know, whatever staff's recommendation is, is what I'll go by, but it's something I empathize with them, I'd like to get it fixed, but truth be told, and I believe 100% what you said as far as the prior commissioner and her recollection, I believe that 100%. Don't have any reason to question that, but there's a big difference between agreeing to build something and agreeing to maintain it in perpetuity. So, depending on what staff finds, and, you know, really what the end result would be insofar as our obligation to maintain it is concerned, that would essentially drive how I'd go with something like that. But I would like to do what we can within reason to fix it. So, if it's something that simply requires us to act as a pass-through, wonderful.
Let's wait and see what Eden finds.
Sounds good.
Go from there.
Are we maintaining the wall now?
No.
There?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe at least an option to explore is us, you know?
Well, yeah, I'm not adverse to negotiating with them so that we can come to some finality.
Because they'll probably maintain it better than we would be able to keep up with it.
Well, to my knowledge, they have been.
Right. That's what I'm saying, so if they've already been doing all the work anyway, but at least, you know, let's help them out, so they can get it fixed.
The stumbling block was the insurance company didn't know who to write the check to. And, "It's your wall." "No, it's my wall." "No, it's not my wall, it's your wall." So, that's where we are.
Did you have anything else?
No. That's it. Thank you.
Is this new or old?
No, it's old.
Okay. All right. I should have probably addressed it when you guys were up talking about transportation, but as you know, not just from your trips to my office, but my position during budget, that transportation is very important to me personally as a commissioner, and I appreciate the fact that you recognize that we're able to do something this year, which is more than what's been done in previous years past. And now, unfortunately, we're playing catch-up. And I don't want to say, you know, be satisfied with what you have now, but let's, let's peck away at this problem, and let's move forward, let's get a little bit each year. At least that's going to be my intention, and I believe that we've got a board, or at least the majority of the board, that views transportation as important, because, you know, we have different commissioners up here that were able to advocate for routes in their district, that were able to add routes, regular public transportation routes to their district, and again, add those two paratransport units. Everybody was in support of it, I believe. I think we're all in agreeance that it was, that it was important to all of us, because that is a function of what we're supposed to do. And, you know, with that paratransport, we're able to add 34 new routes for disabled or needy medical people, and that, to me, is a heck of an accomplishment from where we were even five years ago. So, let's peck away at the problem, we hear you, and we care about all of you, and we care about our community, and I think we're, we are on the same page when it comes to increasing public transportation. And we'll look again, and I agree that we need to do better with our shelters, that's definitely, but they're quite expensive. They're expensive to install, and they're expensive, expensive to maintain. But we'll definitely be looking at it. You have a staff of county staff that definitely believes that we need to do better, but it's ultimately us that will, that has to commit those funds, and has to go after those dollars and make it a priority. So, you've got one champion on your team for sure, and I'm sure you have others. With that, it's my daughter's birthday, completely unrelated, it's her sweet 16 birthday. So, I want to be on the record for wishing her a happy sweet 16, and I'm, after leaving here, I'm going to go home and make her her favorite dinner. So, happy sweet 16, Jaclyn, and I hope it's wonderful. And it's also Jill Hayes, our budget director. What are the odds that we're both here at the same public meeting? It's her daughter Allison's 13th birthday. So, happy birthday, Allison Hayes. 13's a milestone as well, she's a teenager, so I hope you guys have a lovely evening, and I'm glad you'll be able to get home early to spend that time with her. And with that, a sad note, I hate to switch from one happy thing to the other, but many of you know Commissioner Smith was late to the meeting, and not because he wanted to be, but because he was at a service for one of our Brevard County fixtures, Henry Minibu, who lost his son Alex unexpectedly. So, with that, I just want to express my heartfelt thoughts and prayers for his family. And Henry is, Henry's a wonderful man that many of us know, or at least have interacted with sometime, because he's been in Brevard County for so long. So, I just wanted to express my personal thoughts and prayers to him and his family. And I believe that's all I have. So, if this commission doesn't have anything else, I'd like to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.